Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Monday, August 18th, meeting of the Tuckahoe Village Board of Trustees. Will everyone please stand for the pledge of the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the deputy clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Giordano.
Present.
Trustee Luizy.
Present.
Trustee Alpassi.
Present.
Mayor Eklund.
I am here tonight. Trustee Quigley is absent. Make a note of that. I have no appointments tonight, and the first order of business I have is to actually talk about our Fisher Avenue parking lot closure project, which I know is probably why we finally have some attendees at one of our board meetings. So, thank you all for coming. What I'll do is I'll actually kind of bring everyone, walk you through the process of what we're doing and how we got to where we are right now. This is a project that, it's not a simple paving project, and I think a lot of people are frustrated. They're thinking, gee, why can't you pave the parking lot in two days? It's because we're not paving the parking lot. What we're doing is we're actually going to be ex, we're taking out the center island, and we're going to be excavating everything that's in that parking lot. We applied for a, probably for the last, I want to say, three, four years, each year we applied for a grant for not only just this parking lot, but all the parking lots we have in the village. And we were very successful last year to get notification that we're receiving $331,000 from a fish and wildlife grant. So, why a fish and wildlife grant for a parking lot in Tuckahoe? It's because what we're doing is we're going to actually make that parking lot much more environmentally sound for our village. We're going to be, by ripping up the entire parking surface, we're going to be putting inside, in the ground, a, we did it down at our yard in DPW. It's a hydro-matic water separator or something. I know I've got the term wrong, and our DPW commissioner's on vacation this week, so we can't clarify that for me. But what it's going to do, basically, is all the contaminants that come off of your vehicles that park in this parking lot, right now, when it rains, they're all going into the catch basin, and all those pollutants are going right out into the Bronx River. So, this is actually going to separate all those chemicals, and we're only going to be pushing fresh water into the Bronx River, which is clearly what we'd like to do. So, it's a $331,000 grant. We had to, we were notified of the award last year, at some point last year, I forget when. We had to, we had an obligation to go ahead and also contribute some taxpayer money towards this project as well. So, we went out and decided to go ahead and borrow $105,000, which we did late last year in a bond. So, we secured all the funding. Once we demonstrated to them that we had the funding in place, then they officially gave us the contract, I should say, for the grant money. Then, we had to go ahead and approve it as a board, which we did. We had to hire an architect, which is DAF Engineering, who does this kind of work. They actually did all the design work for the project. Then, they had to write a bid spec. We started the, what did we start the bid, go out to bid on this? How long has it been out? I want to say, within the last month. We opened, we, we started soliciting bids within the last month, and the bids are going to be open on Wednesday of this week. So, we wanted to get the job done in the summer. Obviously, we lost that window to get it done, but we also were very conscious of the fact that we want to make sure that the job was going to be done before November, because we have merchants in that area, and if we had a closed parking facility, it would put them out of business, and certainly, we don't want that. So, we know it's a major inconvenience for everyone who's here who pays us. You're our customers, you know, and, you know, we, you know, the customer's king. So, we're terribly sorry that this is an inconvenience to you, but we had to get it done now. The grant expiration was June 30th of this year. I was able to get them to extend it. I thought I could get it extended for a year, so I could maybe do it next summer, and they were hard and fast. They said, nope, this grant has to be completely used by the end of this year. So, that made us push it up and make sure that we're going to, hopefully, we get a bid that is successful, that's within our budget, that's critical. We'll know that on Wednesday. We will have a special meeting of the Board of Trustees to award this contract. The language in the contract says that the job has to be completed on Halloween, on October 31st. If the contractor's not done on October 31st, he has a daily fine of $900 to $1,000 in his contract. So, we put an end date of when the job has to be done. We sent you all out in notice, saying that we anticipate it's going to be two months. We expect it, with good weather, to be maybe a little less than that. Maybe I'm optimistic, but I do think that it's going to be a little less than eight weeks, and that's pretty much where we're at. I mean, we have, we have 67 clients who park in this parking lot. 29 of them are folks who live in New Rochelle. We have 36 folks who live in Eastchester who park in this lot, and we have two merchants. I think, we have some merchants who are here tonight. So, you know, we have a cross-section. We have no Tuckahoe residents, because if you live in Tuckahoe, you walk to the train station. So, it's, we're in the parking business. Like it or not, the village is in the parking business, and you are our customers. So, we thought, we had a couple of meetings on this internally. We met with the designer, I met with our police chief, and we tried to figure out other alternate solutions. Can we go ahead and push you into other lots? Obviously, we can't, because we are, just like the airlines, we're, we have every seat in our plane sold, and we, we could sell double the amount of parking that we have. So, we talked about, you know, could we go ahead and use our trolley as a shuttle vehicle for maybe picking people up? At one point, we were thinking of the top of Mill Road. The whole coordination of that, of, are we, if we picked up two people in the trolley, and the trolley is now heading down Fisher Avenue or Lincoln Avenue, down to the train station, is there four people who are running after the trolley? You know, just that whole coordination aspect of trying to be a taxi business. In essence, really, you need to be a taxi business to go ahead and accommodate what your needs are going to be for this two months. So, it's, it was a difficult decision for us to make, to go ahead and just say, hey, sorry, you're going to have to find an alternate space to park. We figured that some people would go ahead and maybe have relatives drop them off at the parking, you know, at the train station, but it was, for us, it was really the only decision that we had. So, with that, please come on up. I'm here. You can yell at me. You can, I don't know if I've answered your questions, but if you have any questions at all, please come on up to the mic. If you just tell us your name, please.
I'm Jen List, and I live at 1033 California Road, and I walk about once a week home, and it takes half an hour. I have a job in the city that I need to be at by 8:30 in the morning, and I'm often there till 7:00 at night. I have no relatives, no children, no neighbors, no way to get to the train, and so, as I said to you earlier, the only option I can think of is renting a room in the city, because we tried to do the drive-in, took an hour and 45 minutes to get in, an hour and a half to get back, and I would just like some idea of what you do if you don't have a relative who can drive you to the train. And if I don't go to work, I mean, somebody, when I called, said I could work from home. I can't work from home.
Is there any way you can carpool with other people who are in the same boat that you're in?
And where do we park?
No, I mean, if, in other words, if you carpool with somebody who is dropping, you know, there's somebody else in this room who's going to maybe get somebody to drop them off at the station.
If there's somebody who would like to pick me up at my house and drop me off at the train and pick me up at the train and drive me home, I'm thrilled. I just don't know who that is.
Okay, thank you.
I'm Frank Inpana, one of the owners of Martine's Bakery. I understand, you know, that you have, you're trying to revitalize the city, and, you know, it's an ugly parking lot.
It's in bad shape, too.
It sounds like a nice idea.
It's in really bad shape, too, yeah.
Right, but the butt is, the butt is coming, and the butt is, what, what are your plans? What do you plan on doing with the permit parking cars? Where are they going to park?
You're saying the people who have permit parking?
Yes.
They're, they have to find alternate parking arrangements or alternate, alternate means to get to the, I'm assuming they're all coming down and parking there to get on the train, so...
There was a, I'm sorry, there was a rumor, maybe I misunderstood it, that, that the permit parking, and it, and not a knock to any permit parkers, you know, but from a business standpoint, business owner, I think we were on the assumption that the permit parking was, was going to go, they would, they'd be given meter, meter spaces.
No, no, we, if we did that, we'd put you out of business, and we knew that. So, we, look, we kicked around all, a whole bunch of different, you know, there was a, some people said, well, just let us park everywhere in the village. You know, let us park on Young Place, on Marbledale Road, on Crescent, you know, let us park...
So, it's pretty much every man for himself.
Unfortunately, yeah. It's a six-to-eight week, short-term project, and we did look at that, but we, you know, we can't, we can't go ahead and let everyone, if they parked on Fisher Avenue, take up all those meters, where are your customers going to park? You're out of business. You're closed, right. And we're trying to get this done as quick as possible. We know your busy season's going to kick in after Halloween, so...
Okay. What about an, like, as an alternate, allow, allow the per, or allow anyone, allow anyone to park in the streets behind, you know, what's the name of that street? You know, the streets behind, what's the, what's the name of that street? If you go up Fisher Avenue, you make a left, you know, the side streets, you know, relax...
You mean like Oakland, Hy-Vee, all those roads there?
Yeah, yeah. Allow, you know, maybe we could suspend the parking regulations.
Well, that's what we were talking about. We said...
And, you know, you take a little hit with, you know, with your ticket enforcement.
Well, most of those spots are now used by people who live on those streets.
But maybe we could tell those, maybe we could have the, you know, the permit parkers park in those streets, so they don't take up all the meter, you know, all the meter spots along Columbus and along Fisher. You know, I mean, it's, it's going to be a little, an extra 50-yard walk, walk for them, but, you know, on the other side of the coin, it, it's going to, it's going to hurt us a lot, and, you know, because if it's not convenient, if it's not convenient to get a cup of coffee, people will move on. You have a new business across the street, you know, at that organic place, they just started. You know, they, they can't afford to lose customers. Dog groomers, you know, they're, they're a new family business, and them, like us, I don't, I don't know if they're here, I don't know who they are, but, you know, we put, put everything, you know, we're, we're all small business owners, and we put every penny and every, you know, we haven't closed a day since we opened.
Right.
You know, and we put everything into this, and it's going to hurt.
Just, I'm sorry.
Sure, tell.
My wife's telling.
You're saying, you're saying that my business, the busy, busy season is going to start in November. I'm always busy.
No, I know that. You're, we get that.
No, no, no. That's not, that's not the point. The point is that my business is built, exactly, I, I know exactly how much money I have, I know exactly how many people I, I pay every day, okay? And I pay a lot of people. A lot of people live on this money. I cannot cut hours. These people, it's so hard to find good people to work for you, and these people, they, they rely on, on the money that I pay them every week or every two weeks, depending on the person, okay? And for me to cut their hours for two months, they are going to go and get other jobs, if they can get other jobs, okay? Two months is a long time. It's a long time, and you know, you're in business, as well as I do, that any project, you think it's going to cost you a dollar, it costs you two. You think it's going to take you a day, it takes you two. It never, never, a project like this will never stay at two months, not with people that work eight hours, and then it's overtime, and they can't work on the weekend, and we're hoping for good weather. It's not going to happen. $900 to $1,000 for a project like this as, as, as a fine is ridiculous.
As opposed to what they're getting paid for the contract, I'll give you a thousand dollars a day.
It's ridiculous. If you said that they're going to be fined $50,000 a day, they will finish the job. And if you told them that if the job is going to be done after three weeks or one month, and you're going to give them a bonus, then they will have an incentive to finish it. You, you can't do $900 a day, you can't expect them to finish it in two months.
For a fine, you mean after the October 13th?
You can, you can. You can have that, a fine of $900 a day.
I mean, it's a whole union issue, you know, that's another story, but with, with the state of the country now, with the economy and all this mess that's going on, it's like, do we really need to, you know, do we really need to do this? And, you know, we're going to suffer, we're going to let people go, and, you know, it's just, it's just a bad situation.
How do you feel that if, if you still have the same meter parking, if I can go ahead and park in front of your store and put a quarter in the meter and go on and get a cup of coffee?
A lot of them can park on the other, on the, in the lot.
So, you're saying that the loss of the meters inside the lot is what is going to contribute to the decline of your, right, okay.
That, and, and the commuters that...
Or who normally would park there, stop and get a cup of coffee and run and jump on the train. I understand that, yeah.
Exactly, and all those commuters that are not going to come in, I mean...
They're going to park at 7:00 in the morning and come back at 7:00, leave their car there all day. So, if they know spaces, people are just going to...
And, and you know what, somebody dropping them off, and they're not walking or parking in the lot and, and walking down Fisher Avenue, and they're not going to come to the store. They're going to be, they're going to be dropped off and get on the, on the train.
Well, even if there was a situation, if we had another lot that was further away, or if we had the trolley that was somehow, it's still not going to help you guys. It's not going to, you know, they're, they're still getting off the trolley right in front of the train, jumping, going up the, right.
I mean, it's going to hurt, we, we understand that, you know, you, you have a job to do, and you're, you know, you're fixing a parking lot.
Right, we're making an improvement.
We understand.
Yeah, mhm.
With that said, no matter what you do with the parking, if you close the lot, we're going to take a big hit, and it's, it's going to hurt us.
We looked at the leap, you know, I call it leapfrogging, do half at a time. We, we looked at that, and to me, that's, would have been the best-case scenario, and...
Yeah, but, but, that said, you know, it's going to hurt us anyway.
Right.
Because if the park, a lot of people park in the parking lot, and then they walk down. If they, if they see, okay, all the meter spots are done, they're going to go somewhere else, you know, so it, it's definitely going to hurt us one way or another.
Plus, we need to talk to you as well, too. We're going to have to talk to you. I'm sure you get deliveries in the back, you know, you've got garbage pickup in the back, so, you know, we, once the contract is awarded, we're going to have to sit down with you and, and the other businesses behind there.
It's going to be hard.
Yeah.
We, we're going to have to deal with it.
Right.
But, I mean, if there's some way that we could, you know, like, like I said, have the, have the, you know, let the permit parkers know that they, they have to park on the side streets. They can't park on Fisher or, you know, you know, where Crestwood Pizza is, you know, it's going to, it's going to hurt them, too. There's a new bagel store down the street. I mean, they, they rely on people parking, you know?
I, I think, I think that...
It's going to hurt us all.
If this thing has to get done, which it has to get done, I guess, your best solution, as I see it, would be a much bigger fine. Work around the clock. Forget about, America does business right now about eight hours, and, and there's one person working and 20 looking at them. Give them an incentive to finish it early, a big fine if you don't, and, and get this thing done fast, and have the trolley with, you know, giving the commuters...
I think the, the pressure that the contractor's going to get to make sure that he's done on or before Halloween is going to be pretty intense, yeah. I definitely believe that.
I mean, how much do you get to pay for the, for the job, you know, probably?
We don't even have a, no, no, we don't, we only have $400,000. I mean, they, that's all public knowledge, so, we don't have a, we, we haven't opened the bids yet. We open them on Wednesday, so...
But just, I mean, if, like I said, if you could do that with the permit parking, you know, like I said, if they park on site, maybe it's a five-minute extra walk.
Mhm.
You know, it's going to put them out five minutes, but it's going to kill us, you know? Maybe, maybe cover the meters until it's...
The trolley's going to be, the trolley's going to be your, your best bet with that. As I, as I heard the Lake Isle, you know, they, they can park over there, and the trolley will bring them down.
They could do that.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is Ronald Herzog. I park in the lot. I understand the problem the merchants are expressing, and I think it's a valid one. I don't think a larger fine is an answer, because then you'd run into an enforceability problem. It would, it would arguably be a penalty if you got above a certain amount. But I think a fair compromise would be to almost, would be to have, in effect, two zones. Anything in the immediate area, I think, should remain intact for the merchants. In part, I think that's essential for their, for their continued viability, and also, most people I know who work in the city don't have enough quarters every day to feed those meters, and if they're hour or two-hour meters, it doesn't make that much difference whether you're on the 7:00 train or the 8:00 train. You come home at 8:00 at night, the meter's going to be long expired. But where I do think you can accommodate the parkers in the lot, and also recapture some of the lost income, would be to take a zone, starting at Marbledale, and maybe even over to Young, and anything, I guess it's east of that. If you display your permit, you should not be subject to the two or the four-hour limit. And in exchange for that, it's a little longer walk, I guess, if you park in that lot, you've gotten spoiled, but...
Which is why you pay a premium. We're in the parking business, so, yes, yeah.
But those people should be given the option of not being, given the choice of either getting a credit or getting a refund. And if 50 of those people accept that, as I think they, they would, I think that's about $15,000 over that two-month period that would be, in effect, found money. Now, if we're going to have to be somewhat inconvenienced, when you go up to Marbledale, it's all industrial. There, there's parking there. I've done it in the morning, I've done it when I come home at night. There are a lot of space there. There's space on Young, there's space on Lincoln. It's obviously a bit of a walk, but I think if people are given the option, and you can, you know, sign them up and display their permits there for that, hopefully, six weeks, whatever period it would be, it would be some shared pain, if you will, but it would be a win-win. You wouldn't displace the people who really don't have any option. I mean, you know better than I do what the parking situation is here, but you also then wouldn't force people to either take a credit or, or to get a refund, and the village would, would recapture that money.
If you parked on Marbledale Road, not saying that this is pop, we're just kind of tossing, skipping stones here tonight, and you were halfway up Marbledale Road towards Main Street, I don't commute to the city, so I'm assuming that you can still take the Tuckahoe, you would walk to the Tuckahoe Station. There's no...
No, excuse me, I'm talking about just, as you're heading up from the station, just turning on Marbledale and finding the, the spot closer to...
In the residential se, you're talking about between, right, in the...
No, in the industrial section.
Right, in the...
And walking down to the Crestwood Station.
Well, 50 cars parked, I mean, that street is totally filled with cars to begin with, just with all the businesses that are there. What I'm...
Young isn't.
No, no, I know, I...
Lincoln isn't when you, when you, when you drive down in the morning.
Right. I guess where I'm going with this, though, is my question is, you can, you have a Crest, you park in the Crestwood Lot, you commute from the Crestwood Train Station, but you can also commute from the Tuckahoe Station, too. No penalty, there's no, it's, it's not cheaper, it's the same rate? I guess where I'm going with this is, since I'm not a commuter, you can obviously tell that, if you have a pass, I see people, you show the conductor your pass, whether you're getting on a Crestwood or getting on a Tuckahoe, it's the same, gotcha, okay, all right, okay.
Oh, what do I do with my car in Tuckahoe?
No, I'm saying, if there was, if there was alternate parking somewhere else, and you, not that we have any, if I did, you folks wouldn't be here, because you wouldn't have gotten that letter. But I just wanted to understand that you could commute from the Tuckahoe Station as well as the Crestwood Station.
Do Tuckahoe, I could do, do Bronxville, I could pay more and go off to Scarsdale.
Okay.
There are a lot of options, but there is a lot of on-street parking within a walkable distance of the station. And again, not saying that anybody should be able to have their permit override a meter for the merchants and for congestion, whatever, but there, there is parking that's in a walkable distance, and I...
In those two-hour, four-hour zones and some of those residential streets.
In those two-hour, four-hour zones, right. And I think one option that should be given people is, if you want to do that, understand you have to display your permit, the same way you have to display it in the lot, but you will be paying for that. You will not be entitled to the offset or, or the credit, and, and give people that option.
I'm going to ask you to sit down, because I'm going to ask somebody to come on up to the mic. Not that I'm telling you to sit down, but...
Oh, my, my wife does it all the time, so, so feel free.
Because we have somebody here who's on vacation, but he came in tonight, I want to thank him very much, because I want to ask him the question, and I hate to put him on the spot. He's our chief of police, and, and I know we talked about, sorry, chief, we talked about this aspect, and I, and I think what it, what I'm going to hear is that it's going to really burden everyone else who, let's say you, I live on Marbledale Road, between Fisher and Lincoln. Now, I don't park on the street in front of my house, but let's say I did. Let's say I have the sticker and I park there, and now 50 or 67 people can now park on Marbledale Road in front of my house. All right, so now I don't have any place to park. Let's say I don't have off-street parking. So, where am I going to park? Well, I'm going to, I guess, is that maybe the answer you're going to give me? It's really, you're, you're burdening the people who live in, on those streets, because you're taking their parking spots. But I guess, let me throw it to you, chief, sorry.
I mean, these were the discussions we had pre-construction, in that if we tried to say where we could move 67 people plus 12 metered spots, I mean, there are some 12 short, short-term meters in that lot, which also will affect the merchants. And, and the answer is that there is none. Now, I know the gentleman talked about Lincoln Avenue and certain parts of the industrial zone of Marbledale Road, but there's nowhere for 67 cars to go without parking in front of someone's home. So, we have about a dozen people here complaining, and I, I understand their, their pain. We'd have 120 people here complaining if we said we could let, for two months, if somebody's going to park in front of your home, and when you come home, when your kids come home from school, there's going to be a commuter there, but you're going to have to feel the pain. And that's the discussion we had.
All right, okay.
The whole section of Crestwood in Tuckahoe has a two- and four-hour limit, because we want to discourage commuters from parking in front of somebody's home all day. There's not a lot of parking. A lot of those homes don't even have driveways. We'd be transferring the pain from one segment to another, and...
That's not right, okay.
That's what we talked about.
You're right, you're right. Thank you.
Jim Coddington, I park in the lot as well. Just a few comments on the last bit. It's a faulty analysis. You're not looking for 67 spaces, you're looking for something less than that. There will be some who can be dropped off by relatives, as you say. There will be some who find other means. So, let's actually focus on what the real number might be and find out. This gentleman suggested that you put a letter out and find out what that real number is. After you find out that real number, find out if you've got space for it. And then the other thing I would say is that Martine's Bakery, I think, spoke eloquently for the fact that you are impacting many people's livelihoods, not just the commuters, but also the people who work at those stores. I think that ought to be taken very seriously, and, because some of them may actually be your constituents. I do recognize that displacing the people who park in the lot into the streets of Tuckahoe will, in fact, impact people who do vote here. Those of us who live in Eastchester and New Rochelle don't vote here, so that probably diminishes our leverage in this meeting here today. But I still think that you ought to analyze the situation a little more closely, a little with greater granularity, and see how many spots you are talking about, and then see where you might be able to fit them, one way or another, in two-hour, four-hour spots in the industrial area or somewhere else. Thank you.
Excuse me, I didn't catch your name. What is it?
Jim Codd.
where you might be able to fit them, one way or another, in two-hour, four-hour spots in the industrial area or somewhere else. Thank you.
Excuse me, I didn't catch your name. What is it?
Jim Codd.
How do I spell that?
C-O-D-D-I-N-G-T-O-H.
I don't see it on, as one of our commuters, is it under a different name?
Yeah, it's under Jim List.
Oh, List, okay. Then you're not a commuter, your wife is, okay.
Yeah, we both park. Some days, you have a Sunday.
Yes, sir.
Martin Krasner, parking Fisher Lot. A couple of questions. The people who have homes on those streets, are they allowed to park for more than the two hours in the two-hour zone?
If they have a sticker. We actually give a sticker, which is like a waiver to go ahead and park longer than that period of time, yes.
I see. The other request that I would make is that some special consideration be given to senior citizens. I don't know how many of those have parking permits, but it's probably a relatively small number of us.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Anybody else like to talk about the parking issue? Well, first step for, well, not the first step, but the next step in our process is to open bids on Wednesday. Hey, if the bids come back and it's two million dollars to do this project, we're not doing the project, I'm sure of that. So, not that that's what I want. I think it's wonderful that we're able to secure the grant money. You know, that's one of the things that we're very good, or we've been very good here in Tucko, is to ask, and we're fortunate that we're able to receive. And so, three-hundred-and-thirty-one-thousand-one-hundred-and-eighty dollars is three-hundred-and-thirty-one-thousand dollars that Tucko residents don't have to pull out of their pocket. And we've talked for many, many years about trying to set up a parking fund to restore these parking lots. It's not just a lot that you folks park in. We have our other lots, the one right behind Village Hall here is on Under Hills, in terrible shape. I mean, the craters are, sometimes I wonder, you know, it's in very, very bad shape. So, where does the money come from? Well, we apply for grants. This was a grant, like I said, that we had put on our radar screen for quite a long time. It was sort of a creative method to go ahead and get the funding for it, as well as, I think it's an environmentally responsible choice that we've made to go ahead and do this. So, we've done it in other areas of the village as well, too, so it's the right thing to do. But it definitely forces, you know, it puts an impact on our customers, and you guys are, you folks are our customers. So, I deeply apologize, we're still, look, if we're gonna take what you talked about tonight, you know, it did not fall on deaf ears, we're still gonna try and see if there's any other means possible to go ahead and find some parking. If there is, you'll get a notice immediately as to, hey, you know what, go ahead and park here, park there, or we've got some other, some other program that we can do for you. But right now, this is, you know, we couldn't come up with anything other than just displacing you and putting a lot of heat on the low-bid contractor to get this job done. So, we didn't make it an open-ended contract, we put a drop-dead date in there, and I can tell you that we are gonna definitely put the foot on his neck to make sure that the job is done timely, so. Anyway, with that, I'll ask any of my colleagues on the board, I think it's pretty well-talked And thank you all for coming tonight. We're gonna move on to our agenda. Next up is public hearings, and we have no public hearings tonight. That's gonna bring us to the adoption of minutes and the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of July fourteenth, two thousand fourteen. Do I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Luizzi.
In favor.
Trustee Alfasi.
In favor.
In favor. Oh, by the way, I'm just gonna interrupt here. Everyone's probably saying, gee, why aren't they wearing jackets tonight? August, I say, we don't have to wear jackets. It's the hot summer month, although it's definitely not been hot this summer, but we're gonna, look, I'm looking at our new village administrator saying, should I take my jacket off? Do we have any correspondences this month? Not, nothing other than all the angry letters we're getting from the parkers, so that's okay. That's gonna bring us to the first opportunity to address the board on anything that's on our agenda tonight. Okay, I know, Mr. Lorie, that's all right. We'll get to you. Resolutions. I have resolution number one, which is accepting a grant from the Generalso Pope Foundation in the amount of seven-thousand-one-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars to support the Village of Tucko's fireworks event held on July nineteenth. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you very much, David Pope and the Generalso Pope Foundation.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Luizzi.
In favor.
Trustee Alfasi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution number two is awarding a bid for a new sanitation truck for the DPW to Gabrielli Truck Sales Limited with a total bid price of two-hundred-and-four-thousand dollars. This is going to have a five-year cylinder warranty against effective workmanship, which is gonna be three-thousand-eight-hundred-and-eighty dollars. A two-year body and hydraulic warranty for parts, labor, and freight charges on non-wear items for sixteen-hundred-and-eighty dollars, and a nondeductible engine extended warranty for seven years or a hundred-and-fifty-thousand miles for thirty-five-hundred bucks. We'll probably get the full seven years. I don't think we ever put a hundred-and-fifty-thousand miles on a garbage truck. So, do I have a motion for this, to put a brand-new garbage truck on the street?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Luizzi.
In favor.
Trustee Alfasi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. You won't see that garbage truck too quickly, because, believe it or not, after we award, make this award, I think it takes them like seven, eight months to build the truck, so it takes quite a while. Resolution number three is authorizing payment to HCC Public Risk Claim Service Incorporated for costs incurred in a slip-and-fall case. Claimant is Corey Yancy in the amount of two-thousand-six-hundred-ninety-seven dollars, which is below the village liability insurance deductible. Although the individual was injured on property owned by the Tucko Housing Authority, the village was also named in this lawsuit. Do I have a motion for this?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Luizzi.
In favor.
Trustee Alfasi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution number four is authorizing the use of Village Streets for the ICS Students' Walk-a-Thon on Friday, October seventeenth, rain date of Friday, October twenty-fourth. The Walk-a-Thon will start at the church on Winter Hill Road at ten-thirty in the morning and proceed down Main Street to the Generalso Pope Foundation, returning back to the school at about noon time. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Luizzi.
In favor.
Trustee Alfasi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution number five is authorizing the village clerk to issue a special cabaret license to Swirl Enjoy Thirty Columbus Avenue for a one-year anniversary and ribbon-cutting celebration on August twenty-third. From one PM to five PM, there will be a DJ. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Luizzi.
In favor.
Trustee Alfasi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution number six is ratifying the authorization of the village clerk to issue a special cabaret license to Gina Marie's Quanti, one-seventy-four Marble Dale Road, for live Motown sixty's, seventy's, and eighty's music on August third from four PM to ten PM. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
And I think we changed, there's a rain date, it was changed, right.
What, isn't there an August fifteenth date that...
There was an August fifteenth meeting, or August fifteenth, especially...
So, he never used the August third?
He said it was a rain date for the fifteenth, so we should have meant that, or we should actually just put both of them in there to cover ourselves.
So, it will be on August third, rain date of August fifteenth?
Yeah, and these already happened, but...
It's already, it's ratified.
They're ratifying them. Yeah, that's why, they should have both of them on there.
Gotcha. So, August third and August fifteenth, from four to ten PM.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Luizzi.
In favor.
Trustee Alfasi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution number seven is rejecting the bid received on July twenty-ninth for a traffic signal upgrade for the Crestwood Project. The bid was way too high, I'll say. Do I have a motion to reject that bid?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
I actually spoke to the bidder today, and we're gonna see if we can work with our engineer, our new village administrator, see if we can come up with means and method to maybe scale down this project, if that's possible, to bring it to within a price that's somewhat down-on-earth, because it was in outer space, the number on this project.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Luizzi.
In favor.
Trustee Alfasi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution number eight is approving payment of vouchers in the amount of five-hundred-and-eighty-thousand-two-hundred-and-thirty-seven dollars, consisting of abstract number six for nineteen-thousand-eight-hundred-and-seventy bucks, abstract number seven for eighteen-thousand-one-hundred-and-ninety-four dollars, number eight for a hundred-and-twenty-two-thousand-one-hundred-and-ninety-eight dollars, number nine for two-hundred-and-ten-thousand-five-hundred-and-sixteen dollars, number ten for twenty-one-thousand-one-hundred-and-ninety-seven, number eleven for four-thousand-nine-oh-seven, and number twelve for one-hundred-and-eighty-three-thousand-three-hundred-and-fifty-three dollars. The three largest invoices paid were, as always, number one is a hundred-and-twenty-thousand-four-hundred-and-fifty-two dollars for employee health insurance premiums for the month of August this year, seventy-eight-thousand-three-hundred-and-thirty-six dollars was for street paving on the beautiful new streets we laid down in the village, and forty-thousand-four-hundred-and-ninety-six dollars for workers' comp group manager's fee for fiscal year two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Luizzi.
In favor.
Trustee Alfasi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution number nine is a resolution authorizing the mayor to retain the services of Stephen P. Milensky, our consultant for our Crestwood Utility Underground Project, and be it resolved that the fees for the consultant services provided by Stephen P. Milensky in connection with the Columbus Avenue overhead utility relocation project shall not exceed fifteen-thousand dollars. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Luizzi.
In favor.
Trustee Alfasi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution number ten is approving tax or share resettlement for HP One-Five-O Lake LLC, One-Five-O Lake Avenue, Section Thirty-three, Block Seven, Lot Four, for tax years two thousand ten through two thousand thirteen, in the amount of eight-thousand-two-hundred-seven dollars and twenty-three cents. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Luizzi.
In favor.
Trustee Alfasi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution number eleven is approving tax or share resettlement for Philip and Mary Denning, One-Twenty-Five Marble Dale Road, Section Thirty-five, Block One, Lot One-C, for tax years two thousand six through two thousand thirteen, in the amount of fifty-nine-thousand-eight dollars and ninety-three cents. Do I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Luizzi.
In favor.
Trustee Alfasi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution number twelve is authorizing the mayor to sign an application for a public library construction program grant for upgrades to energy-efficient LED lights in the amount of twenty-thousand-five-hundred-and-twenty-eight dollars, with the village contributing half of the said grant if said village is awarded that grant. Do I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Luizzi.
In favor.
Trustee Alfasi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. And that is gonna bring us to our departmental reports to the board, and as I have for many years, always tossed it to the chief, but hold on, chief, hold on. For the first time, I'm gonna toss it to our new village administrator, David Burke.
Great, I appreciate that.
I'm catching him off-guard. He probably didn't even know I was gonna ask him.
No, not at all, but that's fine. I didn't have anything, I guess, planned for tonight for any kind of report. I figured I'd just kinda give you an update of my almost first month here, and kind of what I've been doing, so I've been doing a lot of listening, a lot of meeting with departments. I've met with Chief Costanza and Recreation Attendant Johnny Galuzzi. I've met with our Clerk's Department, actually spent a lot of time in the Clerk's Department. I've met with our Building Inspector, Bill Williams, some of the trustees, kinda interviewing them to see exactly where we need to go. So, over the last month, I've been interviewing them, listening, meeting lots of people, learning, trying to learn lots of things. So, that's kind of what I've been doing, kinda getting into the financials a little bit, going over the budget, going through the audit, going over some of the personnel contracts. So, just kinda coming up to speed on the Fisher Avenue lot, kinda the Crestwood Project, some of the development on Main Street. So, the last month, it's been quite interesting, and I've learned quite a bit, so it's, you know, it's been a mind-spinning kind of month, but I've enjoyed it so far.
As well as you had to put out a couple of forest fires, not literally forest fires, but the air conditioning system went out on the first day on the job there.
That was, that was an interesting first day, absolutely. But it's, yeah, I know, it's been, it's been a good first month, so...
Well, you've done a great job. We appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
And now, we're gonna toss it over to our chief. Thank you for coming in today, chief.
Chief, you look well-tanned.
Yes, it's been a very nice sun...
Because he was working in his garden, I'm sure. He was off today.
I just, I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank some of our partners that helped out during the fireworks celebration. We've come to rely on the East Chester Auxiliary Police and the Westchester County Department of Public Safety's Emergency Force. These are volunteers who come out, but they are truly professionals in how they conduct their business, and they pretty much took care of the East Chester Police Auxiliaries, particularly the traffic control outside of the perimeter of the, of the display. And this year, I parked right here in Village Hall, and I walked down, and so I got an opportunity to sit and, and watch, you know, their performance, and I'll tell you, they, they really took control and got the cars out of there quickly, keeping in mind pedestrian safety the whole time. It really was a true testament to their professionalism. I just wanna thank the director, George Papadimitris, and every one of them who came out and supported us, as well as the members of the emergency force. Again, these are gentlemen and ladies who are not getting paid, who are doing it for public service, and, and they, they really need to know how grateful we are for their service, so I just wanna take the opportunity.
And that's why I never feel bad when they say, hey, can you donate one of those beat-up old police cars you're ready to put a bullet in? And you know what? They take all the crumbs that we give them, and, and they do all this nice work for us, so I think it's fantastic.
And, and, you know, we have the Tucko Challenge coming up, and, and we're gonna rely on them again, so, so we'll be, we'll be seeing them again in a couple of weeks.
Yes.
And that's, I really have no report, I just wanted to...
It's summertime, there's not much going on. Thank you, chief.
Okay.
Thanks again for coming down. I'm gonna actually call up Mr. Galuzzi from our Tucko Community Center, the TCC, as we call it.
Board, mayor. I'd also like to echo Chief Costanza's appreciation for the auxiliary police provided by George Papadimitrio, DPW here locally, and of course, the TPD. They really put, put it all together for us at the fireworks show in July, so I was very appreciative of it, as well as everybody in the community was. So, great job. This coming Friday at the community center, there's something for children and families. If you're a child under ten and your parents like to bring you out to the community center, there's a Fun Magic Show. When I say fun, I mean it's, it's provided by a gentleman called David Fun, and it begins at four o'clock. And David Fun is the magician. And again, it's for families and kids, and it's, you know, with animals and rabbits. And so come on out there if you have nothing to do that day at four o'clock at the community center.
You think that's his real name?
I think it's a stage name.
Okay.
Registration is required to come to that magic show. And the program is sponsored by the Community Fund of Bronxville, Eastchester, Tocco, and the Friends of the Tocco Library. For more information, you could contact the library directly at 961-2121. We'd like to invite everybody in the community and/or in the surrounding community to come out and join us and participate in the 38th Annual Tocco Challenge Road Race on Sunday, September 14th, starting at nine o'clock in the morning at the community center. That's where it kicks off. The race is presented by the village of Tocco. There's a five-mile race and a one-mile race. There are awards for top three overall in both races, male and female. In the five-mile race, there's an award for the top male and female Tocco resident as well. Also, for the five-mile race, the top three male and female winners are elected from the following age groups: from 15 to 19, 20 to 29, all the way up to 70 and over. So there's plenty of room to participate. The Tocco Challenge is, actually, the challenge end of it is to run both races and compete for the best combined time. Top three, male and female overall here as well. So we encourage all the groups to come out and run. Check-in registration begins at 7:30 in the morning at 71 Columbus Avenue here in Tocco. That's the community center. Please show up early. We're upstairs. T-shirts that are given to all entry, those that entry, and ribbons to all that actually finished the race. Trophies and medals for the race winners, of course, and other prizes. There'll be a raffle as well out there. So if you're interested and you want to participate, you must fill out a form, an entry form. The entry forms, where can they be found? Well, here at the Village Hall, Tocco Community Center, and the Tocco Library. I personally can, will be happy to email you a form if you give me a call at the community center at 231-0229. Race day entrance fee signup is $5 more during the day, that day. So you want to sign up early and save $5. Proceeds from the Tocco Challenge Road Race, well, they're donated to the Tocco senior citizens, Tocco Beautification, Eastchester Community Action Program, and EVAC. September brings us, so, quite, quite a few events. The other one I'd like to speak about briefly is the Feast of St. Padre Pio, which is also next month. And that's in Depot Square. It's all sponsored by the Generoso Pope Foundation. And the dates for the Feast of St. Padre Pio are the 19th, 20th, and 21st. That's a Friday, Saturday, Sunday. It should be another wonderful weekend spent here in the village of Tocco. So join us in celebrating the life of St. Pio that day, that weekend, rather, 19 to 21. The procession from Assumption Church, a lot of people were asking about the procession, they ask every year, is Friday the 19th, approximately 6:30 PM, leading from Assumption Church into Depot Square. And the procession of St. Pio back to Assumption Church will be Sunday, the 21st, from Depot Square, going back to Assumption at 7:00 PM. Food vendors, of course, plenty of entertainment all three days that weekend, traditional Italian music, performers, bands, artists. And our main night is the 20th, which is the Saturday night, that special night with WKTU, and all the surprise acts, the club acts. And you could also contact me for any information on those events, the feast, at 231-0229. I'm at the community center. Open gym, still in full swing this summer. Plenty of time for kids to get together down at the community center, play ball. The hours for that are 3 to 5, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. So finishing up the summer with some open gym. We continue to book various different kinds of parties. Birthday parties and dodgeball parties seem to be very popular at the community center for a nice price, $100 for two hours. So if you have anybody who'd like to come down for a birthday party or any kind of seminar, if you want to book a celebration of any kind, a meeting, please contact me at the community center. Schedule it with us. Again, 231-0229. I'm John Galuzzi. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Boy, you've got such a DJ-type voice there. Sounds great. Camille, anything for us tonight? And how about our village attorney, Gary?
I think no news.
All right. No news is definitely good news on the legal department. Our next village board meeting is going to be on September 15th, which is a Monday, of course. And as Mr. Galuzzi did mention, our road race is going to be on Sunday, the 14th, day before our next board meeting. That is going to bring us to our Board of Trustees member reports. And we always start with your very able deputy mayor, Mr. Thomas Giordano.
Thank you, Mayor Eklund. Just a couple of things. First of all, I wanted to follow up on last month's report regarding Metro North. I did forward the information that was received from a resident regarding excessive horn blaring between the Crestwood and Tocco stations. I also asked for a status report on earlier requests for some type of relief from these horns, especially during evening hours and even during the day. I guess I received some good news and bad news. The, the bad news was that the, there's been ongoing track work between Tocco and Crestwood. And what that means is when there is active track work, the federal regulations require the horns to sound for blasts, to make certain that anybody who's working in or around that vicinity is, is aware of trains passing. So while that active work is going on, you can expect there to be excessive horns. And I'm not sure there's that much that can be done about that. The good news is that I've been advised that a request for proposal is going to be put out in the fall of 2014. And we actually did recently receive a letter from the MTA talking about safety improvements that are going to be made to the railroad in, in the upcoming years. But one of the aspects of this request for proposals is to improve the PA system at the track, at the stations. And part of that will mean that there will be an aspect of it where instead of, where the PA system is not only sounding notifications or to warn of emergencies or warn of late trains, but also may be used to signal to commuters that a train is coming. So instead of a train needing to blast a horn, which can, as we know, can be heard for up to a half a mile, if not more, it would simply be a sound that might be akin to what you hear when someone who has the hearing disabled, I mean, sorry, the sight disabled, has a, a warning sound when crossing a crosswalk. So something that can be heard in the immediate vicinity but is not going to be heard from a far distance. Those proposals are expected to be due on the RFPs in the first quarter of 2015. I would assume there may be a significant amount of time between the time that those proposals are received and there's actually work done. But I think that there, it does provide some hope that there may be a solution that's going to, that's being looked at seriously by Metro North to try to solve this problem. I imagine that it's not only Tocco, the Tocco and Crestwood stations, nearby residents that are complaining about this. So, so it sounds like there, there may be some progress. And I will continue to follow up, as I have been over the past few months, and advise the public. Second thing is, I just received the Chamber of Commerce Business Directory for 2014 and 2015. And that, coupled with the, the discussions regarding the parking lot, just resonates that we should always remind, mind our residents that they should, to the extent they can, shop local. Our merchants are, are very much responsible for the health and vibrancy of our, our village. And where possible, we should make an effort to, to continue to spend the money that we need to spend locally as opposed to, because we, we do get some of that back in tax revenue. It also, our merchants contribute to the, the beautification and upkeep of our village. I also want to thank Chief Costanzo for, last month, we had talked about with respect to the Crestwood project, perhaps issues relating to Lincoln Avenue and Columbus. I've noticed that every morning, there's been a police officer at that intersection. I think that the, the commuters and our residents really appreciate having the police presence there. So thank you for that. Finally, just to echo what's been said earlier, I wanted to, there's special thanks, I think, for the, the fireworks that we have every year, that we had in, in July. I didn't make it, I was there. I didn't make it down to the bandstand in time for the call.
I was calling for you.
I know. But I was there. And, and every year, I say that this event is, it couldn't be more beautiful and couldn't be more spectacular than the year when I attend. And every year, it is more beautiful and more spectacular. And, and this year, we were also blessed with weather that I think was, was cool and, and calm. And I think that that cool and calm was contributed to by the Eastchester Auxiliary Police, our own police. I'd like to thank again Chief Costanzo for that, and, and George Papa Demetrio for their support in keeping it safe and making everything run well, as well as our Director of Recreation, John Galuzzi, who always makes it a, a special event. And, and last and certainly not least, David Pope and the Generoso Foundation for continuing, year after year, to support our village, to make it better, to support our community. And it's a wonderful event, and I think we're really lucky to have such a great group of people who put it together. That's all I've got.
Thank you. Well said. Trustee Luizzi.
Thank you, mayor. Trustee Quigley asked me to just update the residents on some events that are taking place in the final two weeks at the Tocco Library. On August 20th, all right, 11:00 AM, the Tocco Library will be presenting the movie Joe. And later on that evening at 7:00 PM, Pat Feranga will be entertaining the crowd at the Tocco Library. That is on August 20th. Little side note about Pat Feranga. He is, he was my uncle's best man. So just throw that at you, a little trivia for you in case, even though you may know Feranga as being in the funeral business, but that's another story. Then also continuing at the Tocco Library on Friday, August 22nd, they're going to close out this summer with a kids' magician show at 4:00 PM. As with all these events at the Tocco Library, registration is required. For more information about what will be occurring at the Tocco Library, you can always check the website. Moving on to the seniors, who, the communities, the seniors are on vacation in the month of August. They will be reopening the senior center on September 4th. And their big event planned for the month of September will be a Mount Airy Casino trip. They also will be preparing for their major fundraising event, which is their annual bazaar, which will take place on Saturday, October 4th, at Father Fatih Hall. And as always, I'll keep the community updated on those events in the next meeting. And lastly, the Tocco History Committee has been very busy presenting programs for various groups. The Tocco High School class of 1949 visited Village Hall and had an enjoyable time going through the many volumes of historical articles, pictures, and relics. Our former mayor spoke at the Iona College about the Tocco marble industry. And Arlene Gruber spoke up, spoke about growing up on Main Street and the Washington Hotel. And they also asked me to remind you that the coverlets are still available for the astounding low price of $40. They're available here at Village Hall. And that's all I have, mayor.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
We're going to slide over here. We'll see if our camera can slide over here also to trustee Stephen Alfassi.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
They're struggling in that back room there. It seems to be freezing up a little bit. All right. We're going to see if we can continue. I hope the audio is going through. And we're going to shift now over to our trustee.
The audio's going. We're just going to leave the hall for it.
Great.
Very good. Thank you. Steve Alfassi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Anyway, thank you, everyone, for being patient with us this evening. I just wanted to make a comment, Mr. Mayor, a little bit more about Fisher Avenue lot. And, and although we talked about it, you know, one thing that the constituents should know, we understand the pain that the local merchants are going to feel, and certainly our parking customers. Can you hear me? Oh, okay. Can you hear me now? All right. Sorry about that. One thing I just wanted to reiterate was, you know, when we're, when we're getting three out of every four dollars from someone else, from people who don't have to pay taxes here in the village of Tocco, when we're getting that as a grant, that's pretty hard to turn down. I mean, that, I think everyone understands is why it's imperative that we're moving forward with this project. So with that said, a little bit about the reports. Building Department report, I no longer have that Building Department report. It's now David Burke's. Recreation Department, I no longer have that either. That's now John Galuzzi's, along with Community Events. The webpage report, I no longer have that one either. That's David's Burke's. So, but I do have the Environmental Committee. They did not meet this summer, so there's no report. But they will be meeting September 3rd. The Tree Committee, again, they did not meet this summer, but they will be meeting September 17th. So we'll have a report after their meetings. Since all the committees that I kind of was affiliated with seem to have been going away, I've decided to create my own committee. And that committee, we talked about that the other night at our working session, but it is a real committee. It's going to be the Zoning Code Committee. And the zoning code committee is going to be comprised of myself, David Burke, Bill Williams, and of course, our zoning chairman, Ron Gallo. And we're going to take a look at the zoning code. And this is a pretty big project. We're going to try to take a look at the zoning code and initially take what's called the low-hanging fruit that is on that tree. And we're going to try to alleviate a little bit of the burden that we, as voters and, and people who live here in Tocco, on our zoning code, we're going to try to tighten it up a bit, tighten up some of the definitions, and change things that seem to not make a lot of sense. So that's going to take a little while, but I'm looking forward to it. It's one of the things I campaigned on, and I'm looking forward to that project. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's all my reports.
And thank you very much. You know, it's, it's really important because it's amazing how, in all the years I've been on this board, every so often, we've made some changes to our village code. And some of the changes were archaic. I mean, some of the things, you know, you can't walk and chew gum at the same time.
Right.
Just ridiculous things that, that, you know, we've changed, of course. Our society has changed. And it needs to be gone through with a comb. And I'm glad that you're spearheading that. So, very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. My report will be brief. And I also want to thank the Police Department and everyone who worked on the fireworks show, and the generosity from the, the Generoso Pope Foundation. As Deputy Mayor Giordano said, it was just incredibly. It was fantastic. I had some friends from out of town came down, and they said that they just couldn't believe what a, what a program it was. So absolutely fantastic. Of course, weather makes the event, as it does pretty much any outdoor summer event, and it was just picture-perfect this year. The Crestwood Parking Lot, we heard an awful lot about it tonight. It's, the whole Crestwood Business District is just, there's so much going on right now. And it's going to be a, a sort of a tough area for the next couple of months. I mean, as everyone can see, that construction project at the corner of Columbus and Lincoln is well underway. I went to a pre-construction meeting with that developer and Con Ed people and the Building Department about a month ago. And one thing that was pretty interesting is that that construction project is a modular construction project, which means that the apartments and the units are actually already made. They're sitting in a warehouse, I guess, in Pennsylvania. And what they do is they actually deliver them. And there'll be a crane out there at some point in October, November, whenever they're getting ready to stack them. And they'll just start stacking these modular units, half a dozen or more per day, until they're all in place. They'll put a facade on the front of it. And the developer said that he'll be done with that project very early next year. So it's quite impressive. I've heard from some other people, there's a project like this that's been undertaken in White Plains up by the Sears up in White Plains. So it's not, you know, it's not all that new. And there's quite a lot of other areas in New Jersey where they've done this type of construction. So I guess it's cost-effective for the developer. And what's nice for us is that it makes a job that, with bricks and mortar construction, might be, I don't know, a year and a half, it's going to be done in no time at all. So, but between that project, between our utility underground project that we're trying to close in, wrap up, and the parking lot construction, it's just not a fun time right now in Crestwood. But, you know, I'm, as everyone knows, I'm a glasses-half-full-type person, and you have to look at the finished product. And the improvements that we're making in that area are going to last for an awful long time. And there's going to be, the businesses are going to thrive with the, new people are going to live in that building. You know, that project is going to contain 49, I think it is, studio apartments. And if you think about who's going to live in a studio apartment, it's not going to be a family with three kids. It's going to be a young couple, probably coming out of New York City. They probably don't even have a driver's license, let alone own a car. They'll be commuting on the train. They're going to go to dinner in American Bistro seven nights a week. They're going to go over to Stevens Green. So you know they're going to Martine's Bakery. They're going to get a bagel. So... So I just think it's going to be, you know, wonderful for that area. It's just going to take a little bit of patience on all the people who park there, all the people who live in that area, as well as us, too. So I just ask everyone to be a little patient while we're getting that done. Some of the other large projects that, we've actually hit some of the newspaper, some of the business magazines recently, is, everyone knows now that there is a Marriott Spring Hill Suites Hotel that's, application is in. They had their first meeting at the zoning board this month. They'll be in the zoning board probably for another month or two. And then they'll start their process in the planning board. And that's a hotel and restaurant that's going in on that large, open tract of land down on Marbledale Road at the bottom of Jackson Avenue. And as everyone sees, the, every day, the site changes where the old Crestwood RV used to be, which is at the corner of Main Street and Marbledale Road, opposite the Main Street Park. And it's amazing to see how, literally every day, I wonder, I think to myself, if they had a camera there to kind of take a picture of it, it'd be neat to see how that's evolving. So there's an awful lot of work going on in our beautiful little village here, and lots of good changes coming up. So with that, I just want to tell everyone to be safe. There's two weeks left in summer before your kids go back to school. Please be very safe when school starts, the Thursday after Labor Day. Pay attention to those school buses, watch the kids, you know, they're kind of, you know, jumping beans, you know, getting ready to go to that first day of school. They're not paying attention to you driving, so just have a little extra caution. And that is going to bring us to the second opportunity to address the board. And I see we do have a couple of people, Mr. Laurie, please come on up.
Good evening, gentlemen. My name's Anthony Laurie. Good luck to you, Mr. Administrator. I know I met the village attorney. I paid my parking ticket, so I met him already. There's a couple of things I just wanted to bring to your attention. I also got another part-time job about two years ago. Twice a week, three times a week, I watched my grandchildren.
Best job in the world.
Yeah. And they like to go down and see the waterfalls, and they have the old birds welcome. The other day, I was, I think it was Tuesday of last week, I was pushing my grandson into his little stroller. Somebody probably had a lot of speed on them, probably didn't catch the light. The light was green, I imagine, up on Main Street, on Columbus Avenue, and right over the bridge. And the guy comes speeding down, hit the curb, almost bounced off the curb. I don't know how he didn't blow a tire and just continued on going down towards the Bronx River. What I was just trying to ask you, gentlemen, is, before the new bridge was built, the old bridge had the big iron sidings on in the sidewalk. That was pretty safe. And I've noticed the way the people come down from Main Street and head out towards the Bronx River, if they don't have the red lights, they do some real speeding. And, you know, I think someday, one of those cars is going to go on the sidewalk and hurt somebody, as the chief mentioned before, pedestrian safety. That's just a thought to keep in mind. Another thing I want to bring to your attention, I know you just said it, Mr. Mayor, there's a lot of construction going on in our village, Crestwood, down on Midland Place, now they're talking of a new hotel coming here. And there's a lot of construction going on in Bronxville also. The thing I'm going to bring to you, I know may not, people may not like to hear this, but I'm going to talk about Dennis Winters, the fire commissioner. My opinion, I don't know who his boss is and how he does things, but my opinion, he's a dangerous man. I don't know if you know, he got on the chopping block, is our firehouse here. That's on the chopping block, his thoughts right now. He didn't say close it, he said consolidation. My opinion, consolidation is closing. And with all this construction going on, this is really a dangerous thing. Now, I brought this to the board some 10 years ago, when they closed down the Tuckahoe Hose Company. All right, we have two pieces of apparatus in our, on the Hill Street Firehouse. One is just there parked as a spare. The others are the hook and ladder. We have a tower ladder in North End Firehouse. And, you know, everybody does get sick on days. And when a man gets sick, and there's two men on the tower ladder, when that man gets sick, the other man goes onto the engine, and that tower ladder goes out of service. And there's a lot of equipment that has to be used. A couple of weeks ago, there was a fire up in Lake Isle, where the homes are by the lake, and the tower ladder was out of service. The hook and ladder from Tuckahoe had to go all the way up there, and happened to be in Mr. Colavito's father's house. So I don't know if this board, and the town board, and the board from Bronxville should get together and talk to this man, and let the public know that we're going to lose a firehouse here. And this is a dangerous, dangerous thing. And we have a lot of construction going on in here, a lot of buildings going on in here. Now, when a tower ladder goes out of commission in North End, you've got all of Garth Road over there without a tower ladder. And a hook and ladder has to go from here, all the way up to North End, into the Garth Road section. You know, when they were closing the Tuckahoe Hose Company, they were having a meeting, the Board of Fire Commissioners, up in the town hall. And the judge was one of the commissioners then, Judge in Bronxville. And he says to me, well, you guys all come up here partying with your Tuckahoe Hose Company jackets because you don't want us to close the Tuckahoe Hose Company down? But we're saving so much money. I didn't see my taxes go down, and I don't know if my taxes are going to go down if this firehouse closes. To continue on that story, he said that on a Thursday night, on a Tuesday night, which was St. Patrick's Day, down on Dainty Avenue, Mrs. Chmera's house went on fire, and her husband got killed in that fire. And we had to wait for the engine to come from Bronxville, because Tuckahoe Hose Company was closed down. So this is a very serious matter that, I think, this board and the other two boards, the town board and the village board of Bronxville, should get together and talk to this man, and talk to the board. I mean, we've got three, we've got five commissioners. One is just wasting his time there until he finishes it in December. The other three have to agree with him, with Winters, or he'll chop their heads off. I wish you guys would come to one of these meetings and let him know where we stand at. I don't think Mayor Marvin would approve of her firehouse closing. Now, this firehouse has been here since 1929. And I hope it stays here until another 100, maybe 200 years, for our grandchildren, our great-grandchildrens, to see this. This is, you know, I didn't come here to speak as a volunteer fireman, or I didn't come here to speak as a veteran. I came here to speak as a concerned citizen of this village and this town, and a taxpayer, too. Now, if we're going to close our firehouse, then I want to see reduction in my taxes. They didn't do that when they closed the Tuckahoe Hose Company. But I really think you gentlemen should get up there and find out what's going on. Because this man does what he wants, he has no boss. Nobody rules over him. So I do wish you gentlemen would look into this. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much for bringing it to our attention, too. Thank you.
If I may?
Yes, sir.
You know, there was an article paper last week, Mr. Laurie. And what I find very disturbing, and it's not unique just to Eastchester, but the chief has been given direction not to backfill when a member calls in sick, which, in some instances, allow, doesn't allow them to provide mutual aid to neighboring fire departments, which, I, you know, I had a friend at Mount Vernon Fire Department, and they would never backfill a sick member. And they would just shut the house down and send whatever members were left in that house to another house. Yes, it is very disturbing to me. I wholeheartedly agree with you about that. And if I could just piggyback off your first item that you brought up, and I was going to save it for when the chief wasn't on vacation. But it also concerns Main Street, and it's ironic that it's been mentioned to me by some of the seniors when I've been at Father Fata Hall. But just Thursday night, when I was leaving our work session, and yesterday afternoon in the middle of the day, and what the issue that was brought to my attention by one of the seniors, is that we need, that they feel that we need to put a big sign up on Lake and Main indicating that it is not a two-way street. And how many times I've seen people coming down Main Street and making that nice left turn into, into ongoing traffic. Matter of fact, it was about two weeks ago, I saw a car parked the other way in front of Angelina's. You know, I've seen it happen, and I know it's one of those things that I think we might want to consider as well. But to your points, both are very, very valid, Mr. Laurie.
Anybody else like to address the board? Well, if not, I just want to thank everyone for their patience while we had a little interruption in our audio tonight, and wish everyone a great remaining last couple of weeks in the summer. And if there's no other business tonight, I will ask for a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So moved.
Do I have a second for that?
Second.
Until next time, Tuckahoe, have a very good evening.